On Tuesday, June 4th, 2013 at 7:00 PM. I ask for confirmation of appropriate meeting notice.
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Pigly Wiggly, the Shaw Municipal Center, and the amended agenda was made available to the media.
All right, thank you. I'll move on to number two. I'll welcome the citizens and address any questions or concerns that are not on the agenda. Lynda Clark?
I had a request from someone to bring to your attention that there's some people out there that would be interested in having our busing service do monthly passes, and I don't know if that's something that we can do here as a council, but it was just a suggestion for people since we're going from Whitewater to Janesville.
Mr. Merrick, can you respond? They do, and they're available for sale at the Pigly Wiggly and at Milton City Hall. Yes. If they would like a month-long pass, there's a form that they fill out. We send it over to JTS, and then they can help them with that. I will double-check with Dave Mooman, but when the service was introduced, there was. So if that's changed from now until then, I'll let them know.
Number three, the consent agenda.
We have a request to bring item F2 down, add to the new business agenda.
All right, we'll bring that down. We'll make it item 4D. With that change, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So...
A second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'm opposed.
Motion carries. Number four, new business. Item A is discussion and possible action authorizing staff to execute an agreement with Vandewall and Associates to assist in planning efforts along the Highway 2659 corridor and the Crossroads Industrial Park.
Mr. Mayor, this is something that's described in detail in your council packet and as well as a proposal that was received from Vandewall and Associates last night at approximately 6:00 PM. The primary objective of this is to enter the second phase of the city's preparation for the Highway 26 bypass. Our first phase was really primarily concerned about looking at protecting the existing city businesses and the assets that we currently have by developing additional assets that would draw people into the city. In conversations that I've had with Mayor Frazier and our city's Economic Development Commission, both are in agreement that we need to take advantage of some of the new opportunities that the completion of the Highway 26 bypass will create, and most importantly, that we plan and prepare for those opportunities by having a good detailed plan available for the city's Economic Development Commission, the various committees that are associated within planning that include our Plan Commission, as well as the city council, to ensure that the decisions that are made and the recruitment efforts made in economic development are best serving the city of Milton for the long term. There are going to be opportunities out there to create property value, to create family sustaining wage jobs, and we want to make sure, recognizing that each decision that is made has an impact on future decisions, that these decisions are well-planned and well-thought-out, because we don't want to necessarily, at least I would not recommend, that you take a first-come, first-served situation, simply because one decision that you make related to economic development could negatively impact future opportunities if a decision is made that doesn't serve the long-term interests of that corridor's development. So having said that, our city's contract planning firm is Vandewall and Associates. We've had good experience with them. We used them in 2008 to develop the city's comprehensive plan, so they're very, very familiar with our community. We used Vandewall and Associates again in 2010 as they helped us with the city's Goodrich Square master plan for redevelopment. So they put together the, not only the community listening sessions, but the eventual visual drawings and the vignette that you saw, and simply because I think that that sort of visual aid is very, very helpful in not only getting community support for our planning and our future development or redevelopment in that area, I also think that them putting together a planning document that could strategically be used for economic development could show visuals to various different businesses or potentially even hotel development firms who are looking at possibly putting a hotel out there, that that kind of a document could showcase not only what exists there today, which is what our marketing efforts have really been focused on, but what could be. And I think that that's the true value in using this particular planning firm and using this strategy to guide our economic development efforts on the corridor.
I just have one question. How does that, how does this fit in with, what are we doing with UW-Whitewater with branding and marketing? How does this all fit into the bigger picture?
The mayor and I have a conference phone call at 11 o'clock on Friday with Dr. Jimmy Petrie. He is the gentleman who's overseeing that project. The students have come up with about eight to 10 different logo designs, so they're a little further off than we would have hoped that they would be. Once we can get those concepts narrowed down to three or five, we'll bring them to the council for some review and consideration. But part of that is our developing our own identity, and we're hoping that not only the city's proud history and the interior part of our downtown, but also having a future focus can be part of that marketing and branding strategy. So I'm hoping that by having that conference call with him and incorporating more of that marketing and branding strategy component that Jimmy is able to bring, because he does that for a living, whereas the students did not, the students' focus in our contract was on logo development. And so by expanding his work into assisting us more with marketing, I think we're better able to incorporate this planning document into that. So to answer your question most specifically, both are in work simultaneously, and eventually we want to bring them together, working in tandem, rather than two separate projects. They should go inside and go together. So we would share the information that UW-Whitewater is currently doing with the folks from Vandewall to saying, this is kind of who we believe that we are. This is going to be our identity moving forward. That's obviously subject to your folks' approval. And then once you folks approve that identity and that marketing and branding strategy, we're incorporating into the planning and the strategic marketing efforts for recruiting businesses into the corridor.
So if I understand you correctly, there will, we won't be paying anybody for duplicate efforts?
Correct. One is a marketing and branding strategy. One is a, a true planning document looks at land use and looks at what businesses would go in and along that corridor based on market research and analysis. That's what Vandewall and Associates did for us in the Goodrich Square master plan, and we'd be looking for them to mirror something similar along the corridor.
And this money is already set aside in the budget? Did we set it aside, or?
No. It's $12,000 to $15,000 for, if you see their Phase 1 scope work. We're anticipated to save approximately $32,000 in 2013 from a recent healthcare plan administrator change. There's two different areas where you could choose to pay from the budget for that, those planning, planning services. We budget annually $5,000 a year for planning, and we've used the majority of that already for some work done in the Goodrich Square area as we look to expand parking when, if and/or when potentially the police station vacates and could be torn down to address some parking challenges over there by Milton East Elementary School. So about $5,000 of that, $5,000 has already been used up. Given some of the current objectives of both the city's Economic Development Commission to aggressively begin recruiting a hotel, as well as the fact that we're getting an uptick in inquiries from developers for the city available land along that corridor, I do think that it's important that we take advantage of some of those healthcare plan administrator changes and put together a plan, because my fear would be is that if one development opportunity comes before us and we don't have a plan and we took advantage of that opportunity, it may negatively impact our ability for future opportunities down the road. So that's why I would be recommending this particular investment. And so the dollars of that $12,000 to $15,000, you have two different options. One, you could use completely from general fund, because there is going to be a savings after July 1st from the healthcare plan administrator change, or you could use a combination of general fund and TIF District Number 6 dollars, because this is a TIF District Number 6 expense. I will, I will suggest that at the least that you would do the 50/50 split, because TIF District Number 6 is also scheduled to make that land acquisition of Kerry Hull's land. So I would do no more than a 50/50 split involving TID district funds. I wouldn't fully fund it through the TIF so that you're not negatively impacting development while using all increment for planning. Historically, we use general fund dollars for planning, and I would stick with that as much as possible.
And what does our treasurer suggest?
She's going to tell you to pay all of it with general fund, because TIF District Number 6 has a lot of, a lot of opportunities, but it also has a lot of commitments, and so we want to make sure that we keep as much of those dollars available for development. And planning could arguably very well be a general fund expense. Did I misspeak for?
No, you did not.
All right.
I was just giving her an opportunity, but thank you.
She had this conversation with me about two hours ago. I said, "Don't tell them to put it all in the TIF money, because you're spending all your TIF money." And I said, "Okay, well, I will make sure that they know that."
Okay. Any additional thoughts or questions, concerns?
There's nothing else that may come up that we would have to use this money for, right? I mean, not that I'm opposed to it, I'm just trying to, you know, talk it out.
What does our contingency fund look like at this point?
We have, we budget $50,000 a year for contingency, and if memory serves me correct, we probably used about $7,000 of that. So to ask if anything else will come up for the rest of the calendar year, I will say I'm not that skilled, but I will tell you that there are no other anticipated budget expenditures at this point in time for which we would anticipate needing to use that budget savings.
Okay. If there's no additional questions, then the staff recommendation is to authorize staff to execute an agreement to work with Vandewall and Associates on planning for Highway 2659 at a cost not to exceed $20,000.
Not to exceed $20,000?
Not to exceed $20,000, right?
Staff recommendation, correct. There is $12,000 to $15,000 in Phase 1, and then Phase 2 has a $3,000 to $5,000 component in it, and it will be up to you how, if you want to do both phases right now, if you just want to do Phase 1. But the option that staff recommended is to give the latitude, because Phase 2 talks about going into economic development strategies and recruitment. And so we find value, staff certainly finds value in having that, that level of service provided.
Are we going to pay it all upfront?
Phase 1 would be one agreement, and then once we get done with Phase 1, I would encourage then a Phase 2 to start, and we would come back and we would let you know.
Would we get updates, or it's, are we just going to look at the finished product?
They have historically in their planning documents included a series of meetings that involve opportunities for public input, one at the staff level with a review of the city's comprehensive plan, and conversations with existing business owners and the development community, and then you, your final product that you would see would be a master plan that would show like what the corridor would look like, and then what some potential implementation phases would look like.
I think it would be important to include as much public input somewhere in there. It sounds like they're going to do that. Okay.
Just, just in reference to your question on cost and whether you pay it all upfront, they're proposing to bill it on a time and material basis, so everything will be billed after they do the work. They, they can't, they won't be able to bill you upfront, so you'll have some control over the process then as well.
Okay, do we have a motion?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discussion and possible action regarding 2014 budget timeline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a follow-up from the May 21st meeting. It specifically puts together a proposed timeline for our development of the 2014 budget and service plan for the city. I want to make sure that all of you are comfortable with that and that it meets your expectations for when we have department directors submit their budgets and we go over those, you'll subsequently see all of their raw data requests and then subsequently have input as to how that, that budget is developed. It mirrors the process that we followed the last three years, and I just want to make sure that you're comfortable with that before we get started. Doesn't necessarily require any formal action from the council, but if there's anything anybody would like to see differently or look differently?
I guess I got a question. Has anybody got any ideas on how we get the public involved in this? I mean, that listening session was disappointing, doesn't even come close to have one, one citizen here. How do we get people involved in this?
I actually asked that, I was at a city managers association meeting last, or two Wednesdays ago, and a lot of communities are going to an online component. Both Middleton and Janesville use what they refer to as a budget scorecard, and, and they send that out to people, and they say, "If this is what you wanted to do, if you had, if, you know, what are the most important things to you in putting together the city's budget?" And then people can do that electronically, and then the data can be submitted, and then you can review all of that. I, I think given how much activity there is in Milton, and this is a good thing, that it's just hard for people to make the commitment to come to a meeting. I, I look at, you know, all we have going on in the city and every given night, baseball games and plays and show choir practices and awards nights and scholarships to be handed out, all that kind of stuff, people are just very, very busy. And to come and, and sit, and I, I think, you know, people just, they want what they want, and, you know, if we can make that easy for them to provide input and to do so electronically, that maybe that would be another way, mechanism of outreach that we could try. I, I'm as perplexed as you are. I mean, we talk about big-ticket stuff here, I mean...
I know what you're saying about scheduling, but there's got to be one, more than one person in this community that's concerned enough to get here.
I was there at 6:30 this morning, and I got 10 people telling me things about what this, about what to do.
So that's where we have one of our budget presentations, at 6:30 in the morning.
And I was telling Jerry the misinformation that they had about different things, and I straightened them out on them, and I actually got, after talking with them for about 15 minutes, I, one guy said, "I'll build that dugout for you." So he went and built the dugout Liberty today for me. So I, so after I cleared up some misinformation, but that's, that's where they meet. If you want to go, if you want to budget, go there when they're there, because you get earful.
Do they have wireless access there?
I'm not sure.
I mean, because I'm just thinking, like, we could take some laptops there, we could set up our survey thing online, and we could, you know, spend some time with people, showing them how to do the survey. We can go anywhere and do, and do this stuff.
Trust me, city government there is the big topic.
Yes, it is. I get nailed every time I go to breakfast.
So you just have to endure some good natured kidding.
Do you folks think that there would be value to having staff go to a breakfast setting and say, ask a bunch of questions? I know Eric had done that in Janesville a couple of times. He said he was surprised how, at a more informal setting, because to some, I would imagine it's somewhat intimidating, I mean, despite as friendly as y'all look, to be having to talk and express concerns about in front of, you know, seven people and cameras and being on TV versus over a cup of coffee at a breakfast or something. We could certainly propose listening sessions and bring the budget so people can see what it all looks like.
I think that would be a great idea.
Actually, I think just having one or two people rather than a whole group of people is a lot better. If you went to Charmy Bees, you went to Milton Family.
But chances are, there will only be three to four people that are from the city, and the rest are people out of town or the township.
During the week, though.
Yeah, in, in the morning during the week, a lot of people.
You have to kind of scope out, different groups meet for coffee at different times.
Right, and they know, Charmy Bees and Milton Family, they kind of know who's coming and what. I mean, I don't think it's a waste of time. I don't think it would hurt anything. I think it's a proactive approach. I think we should do the, the online survey, too. I, we talked about that last year.
No, we had done a few online surveys with the school district and had very good response to them.
Now, there are two ways to set that up, and while we have this, have this kind of rolling and talking about budget scheduling, one way is to just simply get a list of priorities from people. That, that's, that's one way. And although I think that there's value to that, I don't know that it's quite as valuable as like what the city of Janesville does, which says, "Okay, if you wanted this, 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 and this, it's going to cost you that. That's what your tax bill would be if you wanted all of this." Because I think that's a much more educational piece. I think that's a little bit more valuable. So I could certainly follow up with Jay and ask him to say, "Hey, can you tell us, you know, what that program looks like, how you get it out to people?" And, and we could get that out through our website. We had a lot of positive traction about our website, and I think that that would be a good way to at least start the dialogue, and also, you know, follow up with those breakfast meetings and see what, and how people would feel about coming to talk about them.
And it would promote local businesses.
I saw a kitchen, I mean, we could have a 6:30 running group today, and they don't understand TIF financing, they don't understand, I mean, I told you the misconceptions today that they had.
You think we could get a 6:30 running group? Because that's really going to...
I think Connie can do just as good a job as you can do.
I'm, I'm confident she could do just as good a job as you.
I was at a, a conference earlier this year that, it was set up like a board game, but people came into it as taxpayers from different groups, and they were given the ability to, to, you know, pay their taxes, and then, you know, a natural disaster happened, different things, and, you know, they realized the impact of what happened to their money. Something took place and someone grabbed their money and different things, and how they ended up with their city taxes, and how the city then ended up with or without money. And I, I think that the people that participated in, it became just like a tabletop game, but it invited, you just went to places like The Gathering Place and different places to involve people, but it was a hands-on activity for them to really understand the concepts. A lot of people do not understand what the impact of different, if, different activities or different things that a TID or a different thing that, they hear the terminology a lot, but they have no understanding what that means. I don't know if there are things that we could put together to, to kind of do an example.
The, the thing I got hit hardest on was the hotel study. Why are you spending that much money for a hotel study? I said, "Because if you land a hotel, that money's going to be made up in six months." And I said, "It's going to lower your taxes, because they're going to be a water user, going to be a bigger tax base." They don't understand any of that. All they see is a $12,000 or $15,000 going for the study. They don't see the economic impact that if you landed, how important that would be to keeping their taxes down, and that's how I expect.
But you could add that to this activity to show it, and how that goes back to them and their taxes.
The room taxes, not the hotel, and a portion of it is designated strictly for the chamber, for your tourism council, so it funds programs that promote the city. It's really a good thing to keep that a hotel.
Another misconception was the splash park, that all of those people there were against it, because it uses 50,000 gallons of water every day going down the drain. That was their belief.
They don't understand the recycling.
Exactly. I said, "It's like a car wash, they recycle the water, it's not, it's not going to use 50,000 gallons a day." I mean, see, but this is the conception that they had with it, and I said, "You think I would have voted for that if I knew we were going to use 50,000 gallons of water every day in this?"
If it lowered the water bill, yes, you would.
Lynda went to Water Howie's Trees around there.
Well, why don't we have staff research some ways to get more citizen input? We do have, we're supposed to have two more listening sessions on this stuff. And maybe, I don't know that everybody needs to necessarily understand the ins and outs of the budget, but, you know, getting a sense of, giving them a sense of how you spend money and how it affects other places you spend, and then also giving them a, some input in how things are prioritized, I think is a really good option. If they look, we all remember the first time we did this budget, it was a tiny bit overwhelming, you know, so you can imagine if you come in cold.
So we could put that on the...
It's a much simpler process now than it used to be. No, I'm sorry, it is.
For sure.
We could put that on the next agenda, then?
Would you like to take action on, on those mechanisms that you want to do to incorporate citizen input? Because some of those things, I'll get information for you, and I'll have recommendations about, like the budget scorecard program and what that looks like, and then we can have a dialogue that, about how you'd like to set up future listening sessions, too. So we can have that on the 18th.
Okay, good. We'll move on to item C, ordinance 376, amend prohibited parking on West High Street and Elma Street.
So me or you, Molly? I can do it. A while back, we amended the ordinance for no parking zone by the large dog park, and High Street, we extended it out.
140 feet from Alliant Energy's driveway, we now want to extend it 250 feet to the telephone pole so that people will not park on High Street, because when they're parked on both sides of High Street, it restricts traffic flow in there, plus they're parking on grass, and they're also parking in ditches and causing a little bit of damage to our shoulders, so this will discourage people from parking on the road and actually get them in the parking lot for the dog park. And that's the ordinance proposal, is to extend it 100, extend it 250 feet from the Alliant Energy Drive West, and it'll take us to the telephone pole and that first residence there.
So is what's happening, is there's enough parking in the lot, but people just aren't utilizing it?
They don't, yeah, it's...
They're going to, they're going to walk...
Closer to park on High Street.
Right.
This will make it the same distance or a little, less the parking lot.
All right. Anybody have any questions? If not, a motion is in order.
I made that motion to amend the prohibited parking on West High Street and Elma Street.
Okay, we're looking for approval of the first reading of ordinance 376 with the option to waive the second and third, if you choose and adopt.
You draw that.
Like that? Okay.
Order of one of those.
Ultimate Verwick move to approve the first reading of ordinance 376, waive the second and third readings and adopt.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All of us in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The item that was moved down, formerly item F2, is designated parking stalls on Parkview Drive. Overman Adams, you requested that.
Lynda Clark had requested that be brought up again.
I am bringing this back to the council after being on two committees, in two committee meetings, because I want to just respectfully disagree with the decisions that were made on this. I think that it's important for us to remember what we have done as a city to bring people in, and one of the purposes of bringing those people in was to support our small businesses. Now, you know that I am Parks and Rec, I have been for many years, so of course, I am looking to get people into our parks and always to get people moving. However, we've had former complaints on Parkview Drive in prior years because the school people were parking in the business areas, and I don't think anybody here was on council at the time, but that was one of the big complaints that we had in the past, and I, Teresa, you might, you might remember some of that. So we had to, you know, we had to go back and we had to address that. We had to address the handicap parking in that area. Now we're going to have, hopefully, we're going to have a lot of traffic coming in for the splash park, and that's a good thing. But we still need to remember that our local businesses need the support of the city. We need to be able to say to them, "Yes, we're bringing you in, all of these people, and yes, we're going to make sure that we also take care of you." And I think making those parking areas that are on the business side, just making that whole side as business parking, I don't think that, that that's too much to ask. There's no reason to come back after you have heard complaints when it can all be taken care of at once. At least by taking care of it at once, that business that is down on the other end of Parkview knows that you are also looking out for them, and that the council isn't the bad guy. So... So, I wanted to just bring those comments in. I'm a very strong supporter of businesses, but I'm also a strong supporter of parks.
So you, so your, your, your desire would be not to have six designated parking stalls, but to have all of the parking stalls designated as for business only?
That is correct.
Mayor, we, we discussed this at Public Safety and also at Public Works, and our thought was to do the first six and not go the rest away for later. Now, also, I said, "These people, if their parking is so limited to, for their customers, why are they parking their cars in front of their businesses?" Now, I, I, I think if we go ahead and do the six, and, and certainly the people from the park for the splash park are not gonna be clear down there in front of the Gold Place or the Holces or parking. And so, the committee, both committees said the first six, and that was to be, and, and if we get complaints, then those people that are parking in front of their businesses can go in the back parking lot. We just spend all that money for parking out in the back, and now we're going to limit the front for people.
Do we have signs up that say there is parking in the back?
Where you gonna...
But all the businesses know that there's parking in the back, and they can park their own cars back there and not, not tie up the front.
But we also have a lot of parking on the other side of the street that is for Milton East and the park itself, for, that people use for whenever they're playing games, or whenever there are special citywide events, or for practices that go on at, at North and South Goodrich Park. So there is also park parking there.
So...
Chief, I'm sorry.
Where are the six stalls gonna be designated right?
In front of the dentist and the pub and, and the cafe, and, and the pizza parlor, that, those right along there.
While Jerry's drying...
And then we're gonna put up signs in front of each parking?
Did you say business parking only?
In front of each stall, or?
Well, I don't know how many signs they'll have, what, probably, just one sign or two that says, I don't know how they'll...
What's the enforcement plan on this?
Well, there is no enforcement.
There is no, that's the thing.
Well, I mean, that's why I'm wondering, how do you enforce anything?
We, we would have to amend the ordinance on the arcing there, obviously, for business parking only, and then we could enforce it.
That's a little bit of a setup question, because that's what all parking is like in downtown areas.
Yeah.
We put restrictions up and down, but there's...
We just wanna, we wanna make them feel guilty.
Unless somebody calls, you know?
There is the cost component, uh, for the extra signs, too.
Because there'd have to be a sign for each stall, correct?
No.
No?
The only other way you can do it is you can put a, a sign on one side with an arrow, a sign on the side that says, "No parking between the signs," but then the person in between is just gonna say, "You can see it." They did that with the twenty-minute ones, the other one, the tall one, they had to put one in front of each stall, so...
So conceivably, you could park, you could go into the business, then you can walk across to the splash park.
Yes.
Yeah.
But that's highly unlikely.
We're gonna, we're gonna be done.
I know, it just seems to be like, it doesn't matter what we do, people are gonna park for the...
You'll see why we're hiring Van De Waal, because I'm not in a position to do a lot of creative drawing.
I mean, we're not gonna enforce it regardless, right?
Okay, can I bring it to you from this angle? I'm a business owner. I have my business down next to the Golden Coin Place. I have a customer coming in, but in the stall outside of my building, two stalls right, there's three little kids running by, and their mom running behind them going, "Stop, stop!" And I'm trying to run my business, and my customer is being distracted. I mean, you know, those are just little things that need to be taken into consideration. And I know I've had kids, and I don't like to walk to go to do my activities just like everybody else does, but I just think that for our small businesses, we need to show that these types of things that we do in our city are not going to, um, be a detriment to their needs as small business owners.
I think in, in any downtown situation, there's always not enough, there's never enough parking. That's always the situation, and so the question is, how do you adapt to it? And we've brought in, um, uh, kind of a, an aggravating factor, um, with putting the splash park in, when we didn't have any, in fact, we, you know, considerably lost a couple of, uh, parking spots. So whatever solution we have now is, is temporary, until we, we do something with the PD and do something with the other land there. I mean, you folks have seen a great plan that has seventy-four new stalls in either twenty, late twenty fourteen or early twenty fifteen, when the new PD is down. So thi- this conversation about this that we're having right now is for about a month.
Yeah. I'll make the motion that we continue with our original motion and do just the six and for the time being.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second, any further discussion?
I just don't think we should do anything that we're not gonna enforce. That's my opinion.
Well, it'll be a little deterrent, right there in front of the pub and, and the, um, cafe, at least, that's where they're most likely to wanna park. That's why we, we were doing just those six.
I mean, I'm not, I'm, actually, I'm not opposed to doing... I know, there is a...
It's just a good phase effort, it's all our part.
And I, and I really thought like, like Linda did, do the whole thing, but, um, I'm willing to go with these six now to see what happens, as Jerry said, because we're building a new one, and then if it does become a problem, owners ask, because we can adapt it later on.
We'll have to keep a good eye on this. Is it just, uh, how many businesses have asked for this? So we'll have to keep an eye on it, and we wanna be responsive to small businesses, as you say, but in the meantime, two committees...
Yeah.
...recommended this, so there's a motion and a second, if there's no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, General items, our next meeting will be June eighteenth, twenty thirteen. Mayor and Alderperson's reports. I just have one thing, I'll be, uh, at The Gathering Place on Monday, I think at eleven, um, just chatting with folks there, um, hopefully getting some citizen input on the budget and other things, but, uh, that's all I have.
I wanna thank Anissa and Maxine for coming to our park dedication on, on Saturday. We had about sixty people.
And Jerry.
And Jerry, what? Counsel, I didn't get to... We're coming. I saw Chief drive by in the squad car, but he didn't stop, no. I think he was looking to get parking tickets for the people, because we're... But I thought it went over as a big, big success, and, um, I think the dugouts looked nice, the plaque is up today for Mr. Galouin down there, if you look at it, the Public Works got that up, Donnie put that up when one of his helpers the next day, and so I think it's, it's a nice thing, uh, for the, for the park. A lot of good comments, I was teaching at Fort Atkinson today, and they played there on Fri- and Saturday, and I knew some of the come teachers, and they said, "God, those are nice dugouts, we wish we had them." So I think it's a good thing for the community, and we did get the one at Liberty, the frame up today, and everything, the roof needs to be put on yet, so...
Yes, I did attend, and I, Don does a great job. I, I mean, a lot of people came out for that dedication, it was impressive, the community support, and Don's committee really does a lot of, a lot of hard work and seems to get a lot of stuff done.
Oh, just remember, uh... Public? I'm in contact with Public Works every day. I wanna commend Howie and his group, because they worked, they worked, I mean, every time I needed something, they were there to help us, so. They have to get all the accolades, because they do a good job going out of their way. I think sometimes I interrupt their work to get some stuff done, but I, I'm just impressed how they come right away and help us. Like, today, I told them, I got this guy coming eight-thirty, said he's gonna do it, and I said, "He doesn't have everything he needs," and obviously, they got him everything he needed, because everything is up at the roof on today, so, so I wanna applaud them.
Any other Alderperson's reports?
I went to the Sojourner Truth...
Yeah.
...at the Milton House, and that was absolutely fabulous, and, um, we, we had a nice turnout, we had a diverse turnout, and they, they really were impressive, that, um, the uprooted production company, they're great. If you can see it again, they're gonna do it at UW Whitewater, and, um, they hopefully will come back and do other, do other shows for us, so I would encourage everybody to, to come next time.
All right, staff reports. City administrator? Just a couple of relatively quick items, uh, some project updates, the, uh, for lack of a better term, the water toys arrived for the splash park this week. So they are here, um, they are coming in kind of in, literally in pieces. Howie and his staff have been doing a great job of managing just a variety of multiple projects that we have going on right now. Um, you'll start to see that, that park really is starting to take shape with concrete being poured and some of the in-ground toys now being set up, so everything is on pace. Uh, he's reading my weekly briefings, the progress reports that Blake sends out, so despite some kind of unusual spring weather, they're, um, they're getting to where they need to be. Um, you'll start to see Three Dimensional, the Parker YMCA, this week. You see the poles out there and that the walls will be up either late this week or early next, so you have a visual idea of what that building is gonna look like. Uh, the concrete pavement is being paved, is being poured on the Highway Twenty-Six bypass. So that's, um, and there's one more utility movement, you guys have a...
They have a hydrant.
A hydrant, right.
They're gonna be...
Okay, so Howie and Garrett are following up on that, and if there's council input or requests for information that we need, or requests for action from you, we'll get that to you. But just, um, a lot of different things going on, all really kinda right at the same time. I do wanna personally thank Connie and Inga for their work in helping me with this healthcare plan administrator change. All of our employees moving from one group to another requires an incredible amount of a coordinated effort, and both of them have sat through what some have now called Jerry's Healthcare Tour, um, which is all of the city employees and all of the departments and hearing the same speech over and over again and making sure employees have the right form. I mean, we were at Public Works last week, the Police Department folks were up on Friday, and so they've just been really helpful to me in that, and so I wanna thank them both for, for their work in that.
Should we call it Jerry Care, like a mom?
Some, some, no, that's okay. Yeah, that's probably what it might sound like by the time that I get done, but, um... And on that point, I did wanna mention the president of St. Ray's Hospital relayed the, um, the appreciation of, of her organization and Dean, um, to me personally. I'm here just earlier at another meeting, so, uh, it, it's nice to be appreciated when you spend that kind of money. And, uh, Fourth of July, if council members have an interest in riding or walking in the Fourth of July, we're accepting parade entries. Um, if you folks wanna have a float or walk or ride in a car, if you could just please email me and let me know, um, and we'll get that set up.
Can we work on this, please?
You sure can. Yep. You just can't throw candy down, they, they changed the rules.
You just can't get caught.
That's not true. That's in, that's in some dispute.
Yeah.
Go quickly to the side.
You wanna talk about citizen input, the three little citizens in my house don't like, uh...
Don't like the no candy rule.
...our service plan. Um, good.
Take the survey.
That's it.
Only one of them can write.
That's right. All right, Public Works. All right. Police Department?
We had an officer injured Friday night, uh, trying to subdue a young lady repeatedly, uh, was put in handcuffs, cut out of handcuffs, put in handcuffs, cut out of handcuffs, uh, but the officer sustained a spring arrest. She was out for a couple days, and due to the fact that this young lady was resisting arrest and caused a soft tissue injury to a police officer, she's now gonna be charged with a felony by the DA's office. At least that's what we submitted and charged it, so we'll see what happens. But she's fine, she's back to work now, but she was out for a couple days, and we had an incident at police department today where utilities went out. Turns out it was an exhaust fan, wiring switch breaker gone bad, and Nick, Nick, the city mechanic, who does everything, came over and fixed that. So, and Nick is fantastic, he fixes our vehicle, he fixed the building, um, he did a great, a great hire as far as I'm concerned.
That's right, it's down there.
Yeah, and so we could've burned the building down, because that's how bad that situation was, and he identified it. And how much do the water toys weigh, and will they not be moved and stolen like our plant do most? Are they heavy, or what?
They're gonna be bolted in.
Okay, all right, good.
All right, that's it. Good. Nobody from Library, nobody from Joint Fire, City Clerk?
I have nothing to report today.
There you go. City Treasurer?
Nope. It's my responsibility.
Moving right along. All right, President Striegel? Uh, and when we get to the next meeting?
Consideration of a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section Nineteen, Point Eighty-Five, Prayer One, Prayer N, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Reference, petition for annexation, employee healthcare buyout policy, and Public Work Department and Police Department Union contract negotiation, Prayer G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who was rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved with. Reference to ethanol development agreement.
A second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we'll take...